I just came up and said, "I want to bet on Duke versus Furman." I said, "Yeah, I got that."
Yeah, Michael.
Michael's back there.
There's Michael.
Hey, Cora.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
How you doing, Tom? Tom?
Life is good.
Getting better.
Every day.
For me?
Just miss my family there in Florida. We've got to go down until Wednesday.
He's figured out the "eh."
I could have skipped these two meetings and gotten it.
He's figured out the "eh" sound, Julian, not Julian. That sometimes takes people years to get it. Trying to think who would make... we should not sit together.
He's looking up.
Evening, folks. How are you?
It was...
We have these ten kids who were there.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Oh, cool. Oh, that's okay.
My friend PC Woo did not get the nomination.
Well, good.
Good evening. We'd like to call the Durham City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM on Monday, the 20th of November, and certainly want to welcome all of you that are here with us this evening. If we could just take a moment for a solemn meditation, please. Thank you. Recognize Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are privileged to have with us to lead us in the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance, Troop 405, and they are affiliated with St. Matthew's Catholic Church here in Durham. We'll turn it over to them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I asked the clerk if she would call the roll, please.
Mayor Bell.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Cole-McFadden.
Present.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
And Councilmember Shul.
Here.
We have two ceremonial items to present tonight. The first is the Neighborhood Spotlight Award, and I would ask Ms. Joanie Hohammer. And you're going to make me pronounce your name correctly when you come up. And certainly any of our neighbors or friends that want to join us. Do you have any neighbors or friends here? It's okay.
It's okay.
As most of you know, the Neighborhood Spotlight Award is awarded monthly, and it's an award that's presented by the Neighborhood Improvement Services Department, and it recognizes individuals who have done outstanding work in their communities, and those individuals are chosen by members of their community. So tonight, Joanie is the recipient of the Neighborhood Spotlight for the month of 2017, and she's resident of Lansbury-Waterbury neighborhood, and she was nominated and selected because of the wonderful work she has done in her neighborhood, and that includes but is not limited to organizing fun, welcoming neighborhood events such as National Night Out, promoting communications in the neighborhood by maintaining the listserv and passing out flyers, and supporting volunteers in gathering resources for the neighborhood's Sandy Creek Park Trail Improvement. I want to congratulate Joanie for this recognition, and the award reads Neighborhood Spotlight Award. This certificate is awarded to Joanie Lansbury-Waterbury neighborhood for organizing fun, welcoming neighborhood events such as National Night Out, promoting communications in the neighborhood by maintaining the listserv and passing out flyers, supporting volunteers in gathering resources for the neighborhood's Sandy Creek Park Trail improvements, and it's signed by the city manager and myself. I'd like to present this to Joanie for any comments that you might have.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for all your years of wonderful service. We appreciate that. I just wanted to say that I live in a very diverse neighborhood, many different religions, race, ethnicities, political party affiliation, and so on, and just increasing the communication, getting everyone knows each other in my neighborhood. We've come to really respect each other and even care for each other. So, thank you for recognizing that, you know, just even the communication is very important. I appreciate it. And thanks to my neighbors who show up at these events because without them, I mean, that's the neighborhood I dreamed of living in. So, thank you.
The next award is to recognize a member of the Country Music Hall of Fame, and when I was looking at the AMA, American Music Awards last night, it sort of reminded me of what I'll be doing this evening. I'm going to ask Brady Slitz if you would join me, if you don't mind. Now, this isn't for Brady. This is for his brother, Don. This is honoring Donald Allen Don Slitz Jr., who is a member of the Country Music Hall of Fame. Whereas Don Slitz Jr. is a Durham native, son of former Durham Police Captain Don Slitz Sr. and Betty Slitz Goodfellow. He attended Durham Public Schools, graduating from Durham High in 1970, and then attended Duke University before moving to Nashville, Tennessee in 1973 to pursue his songwriting career. And whereas in 1978, his first recorded song, "The Gambler," performed by singer Kenny Rogers, reached number one on the country music charts and was followed by 24 other number-one songs, and many others in the top 10. He also composed the music and lyrics for the Broadway musical, "The Adventures of Tom Sawyer," whereas he is the winner of many awards for his songs, which among them are the 1979 Country Music Association and Grammy Song of the Year, "The Gambler." In 1986, the Country Music Association Academy of Country Music Association, Nashville Songwriters Association Song of the Year, on the other hand. In 1987, the Country Music Association Song of the Year, "Forever and Ever, Amen." And in 1988, Grammy Country Song of the Year, "Forever and Ever, Amen." In 1988 through 1991, ASCAP Country Songwriter of the Year, four consecutive years, and in 2010, inducted into the North Carolina Music Hall of Fame, and in 2012, inducted into the Songwriters Hall of Fame in New York City. Whereas on October 22nd, 2017, Don Slitz Jr. was formally inducted into the Country Music Hall of Fame, joining other famous country music icons. He is described as being among the most influential and beloved songwriters in the history of country music. Whereas with all his accomplishments and fame, he finds the time to give back to the community by donating his time and talent and giving weekly performances to some of Nashville's homeless population as part of Room in the End, a nonprofit organization that provides shelter, counseling, and educational programs for the homeless. He considers this opportunity to be a small part of something that's bigger than all of us. Another, for our William V. Bell Bell, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby recognize and honor Don Slitz Jr. for his humanitarian efforts with the homeless and for his outstanding achievements and contributions to country music, as so recognized by his induction into the Country Music Hall of Fame, adorning the walls of the prestigious Hall of Fame, Rontender, and hereby urge all citizens to recognize Don Slitz Jr. for his talents and to take special note of this observance and witness my hand and corporate associate of Durham, North Carolina, this is the 23rd of November, 2017. Before I give this to Brady, I also want to recognize, I know he's not here, Chief Fletcher. He was really the one that brought this to our attention, and I have to confess, it was sort of belated that persons of this fame had not received the recognition any earlier, but it's never too late to correct your mistakes. And tonight, we're certainly doing that, and going to present this to his brother for any comments that he might have.
I'd just like to thank the city, number one, for recognizing my brother. He couldn't be here tonight. He's got other arrangements. He's out on the road doing different things. However, he always takes a chance. Anytime he talks about anything, he's from Durham. My sister Kathy lives in Durham. I do not live in Durham anymore, but I do work in Durham. But anytime that we can, we are proud of Durham. We're proud of our parents that were born and raised, and they weren't here, but they worked here all their lives. But thank you so much for recognizing my brother.
I'd like to recognize any council persons with comments. Recognize, I'll go with Mayor Pro Tim and then Steve, if you don't mind.
On Thursday, I received on behalf of the City of Durham, the 2017 Winner Digital Cities Survey, and we came in second place for cities of 250,000 to 499,999 population categories. So, I present this to our city manager. Congratulations, and it was an honor to get it.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I do want to thank Mayor Pro Tim for representing us at the National League of Cities meeting where this award was presented. I suppose you could say it was a step down since last year we won first place, but I'm still proud that first and second place, year after year, is something that the staff has worked very hard, not just Kerry Good and the Technology Solutions Department staff, but all of the city employees who really are looking at every opportunity to improve our communications and transparency through the use of technology, and certainly winning the second place in this large category of population is nothing to be ashamed of. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we're very proud of all the staff who worked hard to earn this recognition.
Recognize Councilwoman Shul, Mayor-elect Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this is the last full meeting for several of our colleagues, and I just had a few words that I wanted to offer about our colleagues who are departing from the council, all of whom, all four of whom, have rendered remarkable service to our city on this council and before arriving on this council. Mr. Mayor, I'll start with you. You've been sent off by our entire community with the celebration of your legacy, which you so richly deserve. So, I only have one small thing that I want to add to that tonight. When Howard University asked me to speak about you on film for their alumni awards not long ago, I'd said something that I'm going to repeat now. If they had a Mount Rushmore for Durham, I'm not sure who the other three people would be on it, but I know that Bill Bell would be one of those people. For 44 years in elective office, you've been more responsible than any other single individual for the successes of our community, and I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to serve with you, Mr. Mayor, for the past six years, and looking forward a lot to your advice and counsel over the next couple of years. So, I'll be calling on you a lot. I also want to say to our Mayor Pro Tim, Cora Cole-McFadden, I want to thank you for many things, particularly for, I think, being Durham's greatest ambassador, as witnessed by the, just the presentation that we just saw. You've served the city in so many ways, Madam Mayor Pro Tim. I've always especially admired your strong, steady vocal and active commitment to diversity and racial justice, and your unwavering dedication to Durham's young people. You don't just talk about what we ought to be doing for our young people. You're out there doing it every day. You walk them along. Finally, though, I think it's in your role as Durham's ambassador that, in my mind, you've made your greatest mark, as the person who, above anyone I can think of, promotes the greatness of our city to everyone who will listen and some who won't. No one has represented Durham better than you have over these many years, and you have earned some time off to spend with your grand dog, and you've also earned this community's undying gratitude.
I have two grand dogs.
Two grand dogs now, that's right. To my wonderful colleague, Don Moffett, you have brought a standard of hard work, attention to detail, constituent service, and intellectual firepower that is unmatched, and you have combined that with a strong progressive record on every issue, from housing to racial equity to policing. It's hard for me to see how we are going to be able to replace those qualities on the council. They are vital qualities for the success of city government and for our community. What stands out for me, Don, in your years on the council, above all, is the questions you ask, the hard ones, the challenging ones, the ones that have made all of us look at issues in a new way, the ones that have made the work of the staff and of this council better. You dig into the details, into the numbers, and here comes the new way to look at things, the excellent questions, and always gasp in the spirit of respect and support for the work of the people on our staff. For your daunting work ethic, your search for justice, and your never-ending pursuit of the best policies and practices, this community owes you a great debt of gratitude, and you will be sorely missed. And to our junior departing member, Eddie Davis, you have rendered extraordinary service to Durham as a beloved high school teacher, city council member, and community historian. Walking the streets of Durham with you means stopping every couple of blocks so one of your former students can give you a hug or a high five. You have distinguished yourself on the city council for your fervent attention to diversity and equality, your willingness to stand alone on hard issues, your unwavering commitment to speak up when the truth needs to be heard, and your role as Durham's community historian. With Durham about to reach its 150th birthday, I know there would be many more opportunities for you to help lead our citywide celebrations of that milestone, and I look forward to that very much. So, again, I want to thank all of my departing colleagues for their extraordinary service. Enjoy your Monday nights away from this hallowed chamber, and Godspeed.
Thank you. May I respond to Steve? I don't plan to stop coming to City Hall. I am going to be watching you. Each of the new people I will watch.
We'll do our best.
Yeah, I will be watching you. Every shut-eye ain't sleeping, every goodbye ain't gone. That's old school.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't know that Dr. Mayor-elect Councilmember Shul was going to speak about our departing colleagues. I will forego what I had planned to say and just say this, that in my 713 days as a member of this body, every time that I've come to a meeting, whether it's a city council meeting here in this chamber or a work session upstairs, I've been very, very fortunate to have the benefit of the wisdom of the folks that are going to be leaving the council. On Monday nights, I'm really, really lucky to sit between two real Durham treasures, and I have learned at their feet for the last two years so much about the history of our city, so much about how to disagree without being disagreeable, and about how the work that we do affects the lives of real people. And I learned those lessons on Thursday afternoons, too, but I think Councilmember Moffett and I have a rich, ongoing dialogue during our work sessions where each of us tries to keep the other on task and on point, and I really appreciate that dialogue, and I hope that won't end. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll just say to you personally, I have felt so lucky and so blessed to have served with you for the last two years. The sum total of what you've done for our city can't, I don't think officially or effectively be measured today, but I will just say that it's been one of the privileges of my public life to have served with you, and look forward to seeing what's next for you as you continue to be a part of our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'll just say for the night, I appreciate greatly your remarks both by Mayor-elect Steve Shul and Councilman Charlie Reese, and I've said over and over again, I feel comfortable that the city is in a good place and be in an even better place when you have guys have an opportunity to begin governing, and I look forward to that. Are there other comments? If not, recognize city manager for any priority items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. No priority items from the city manager's office.
Likewise, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No priority items.
And likewise, the city clerk.
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll proceed with the agenda as printed, and first section are the consented items, which can be approved with a single vote. If a council member removes an item, we'll discuss that later in the agenda. I'll call the heading of each one of the items. Item one is approval of city council minutes. Item two is citizens advisory committee appointments. Item three is the Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission appointment. Item four is the 2018 city council meeting schedule. Item five is the ordinance to change the fixed route and paratransit fee schedule. Item six is the roof repair and placement various department of water management sites award of construction to Triad Roofing Company, Inc. wants to sell in North Carolina. Item seven is parkwood area lift station consolidation project contract award to Brown and Codwell. Item eight is AT&amp;T North Carolina Emergency Telephone System contract. Item nine is cooperative purchase group for three replacement automated refuge trucks. Item 10 is estate contract purchase for replacement dump trucks. Item 11 is cooperative purchase group for two rear-loading refuge collection vehicles. Item 12 is amendment to professional services contract with Kemble Horn and Associates, Inc., for accessibility improvements at Valley Springs Park in West Point on the Eno Project. Item 13 is the street and infrastructure acceptances. Item 14 is supplemental agreement for North Carolina Department of Transportation, University Drive Sidewalk Project, 50030.3.1- EB-5514. Item 15 is the waste carts, recycling carts, cart parts and related products and services agreement with a specific company. And item 20 is an item that can be found on the general business agenda. Items 21 through 26 are also items that can be found on the general business agenda, is public hearings. Item 28 is the Durham City-County Appearance Commission appointment. Item 29 is proposed City of Durham logo update. Entertained motion for the approval of consented item.
Second.
I have to pull 29, which is the logo. It's been properly moved a second. Madam clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes 7 to 0.
Again, item 29 was pulled, that is proposed City of Durham logo update. We'll discuss that later in the agenda. On the general business agenda, item 20, 2017 third quarter crime report presentation. Chief, before you begin, could someone close that back door, please? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening. Again, I'm here tonight to present the police department's 2017 third quarter report, which covers the first nine months of the year. The quarterly report covers our department's six performance measures, violent crime, property crime, Part I index crime, clearance rates, response times to Priority One calls, and staffing levels. The accompanying summary that you already have includes additional statistics, AMP community activities, and other significant events during the quarter. Part I index crime was up 5% during the first nine months of 2017 compared to the same period last year. This has been driven primarily by increases in larcenies and robberies, which make up more than half of our Part I crimes. Actually, larcenies make up 57%. Lot these are also attributed to thefts from autos. There were decreases in three out of seven Part I crime categories, homicides, aggravated assaults, and burglaries. As you can see, this slide shows a weekly comparison of Part I violent crime and property crime for 2017 compared to the same period in 2016. And of course, the spike occurred at the beginning of the year, and then we began to implement various types of details and other strategies, and we just have been at a plateau over the last several months. The slides also show the statistics through October 28th, which is the end of the quarter. Part I violent crime was up by 4% at the end of September 2017 compared to the first nine months of 2016. The number of homicides and aggravated assaults decreased. Both are at three-year lows. Reported rapes and robberies were up during the first nine months of the year. We formed our robbery task force, as you know, one year ago, approximately a year ago this month, to focus on the increase in robberies, especially consistent reoccurrences of robberies, particularly commercial robberies and those committed with firearms. The unit, the robbery task force unit, have made numerous arrests, total of 112 since their inception, and each investigator has cleared multiple cases. Although rapes are up, there's no indication based on the suspect and victimology data that we have any type of serial issue. Many of these instances were by acquaintances. There have been several belated sexual assaults reported and several involving family members as well. There were 20 homicides by the end of the third quarter. Three have been ruled as self-defense, and there are five open cases. One case involved domestic violence. There have been 24 homicides year-to-date, and there are a total of six open cases. The number of robberies year-to-date has increased, but investigators made several arrests, as I mentioned, during the third quarter, specifically during the third quarter. Many of these arrests cleared multiple business robberies, as you can see in the accompanying summary that you have. Our specialized robbery unit was formed, as I said, several months ago, and they have handled more than 700 cases to date. They focus on commercial robberies and robberies with firearms. In the past year, we have collaborated on 26 robbery cases with our federal partners, the ATF. Five of those suspects have been sentenced to federal time, and eight cases are still under active investigation. In 13 cases, we're waiting for sentencing, trial pleas, or psychological evaluation as well. The number of aggravated assault victims through UCR counts by victims dropped slightly during the first nine months of the year. And just to clarify a little bit about some of the aggravated assaults, the number of multiple victim firearms incidents have dropped, but the number of victims... multiple victim firearms incidents have dropped, but the number of victims is up slightly. This is due primarily to two incidents with a significant number totaling 28 people. Two incidents that totaled 28 people. Two of those 28 victims were shot. The two incidents, July 6, 800 Block of Angier Avenue, that incident had 18 victims. Two were injured in that particular incident. Now, August 25, in the 200 Block of South Woodcrest Street, there were 10 victims. Both cases are still open. There were no injuries in that second incident. Part One property crime. Part One property crime is up by 6% with an increase in larcenies and motor vehicle thefts. Larcenies made up more than 57% of all Part One crime during the first nine months of 2017. Burglaries are continuing a downward trend, in which we've seen in the last few years, actually, last three years, and they are at a three-year low. A large percentage of our larcenies, 44%, are due to motor vehicles and larcenies of vehicle parts. In the next couple of weeks, the department plans to implement what we're calling a clean car campaign, especially during the holidays. As a crime prevention initiative, we hope that this will encourage people to leave the insides of their vehicles clean as they shop, as they're about, out and about, and just on a normal workday, not to leave laptops out, cell phones on their seats, and even cellphone chargers in open and plain view, to try to encourage people to leave the interior of their car where it's not a target-rich type of environment. We continue to urge people to dial 911 to report suspicious activities in their communities. These calls are often very helpful to our officers in making arrests of individuals in neighborhoods where we have had high instances of burglaries, especially property crimes. We've made several burglary arrests as a result of citizens assisting us with very vital information and being the ears and eyes of their community and their willingness to get involved. Clearance rates for homicide, rape, and all Part One property crimes were above the FBI national average clearance rates for cities our size. And for your information, this year, the City of Durham Police Department has moved into a different category. We now fall within the 250,000 to approximately 500,000 population group, according to the FBI reporting standards. This year, due to patrol staffing shortages, we have pulled investigators to do one-week shifts on patrol to help augment our staffing. This may have had an effect on our clearance rates and our workloads as well. Our annual goal, we didn't, we haven't reached it, but we still have another quarter, so we're going to be working very hard to reach the 50% for our violent crimes and property crimes at 23% clearance rates. Homicide clearance rates are actually the highest that they've been, I know, in the last couple of years since I've been here. So, our 2016 statistics are not included in the FBI numbers due to an OSSI data problem. They plan to provide that information to us at a later date. It wasn't an issue for the Police Department. Some computer and data inputting problems occurred with the system. Not just the City of Durham, but other cities as well experienced that problem. There were 7,016 Priority One calls for service from January 1, 2017, through September 30, 2017. This is a 2% increase over the same period in 2016. Even though we didn't meet our target responding to 57% of our Priority One calls at under five minutes, 52.41% were under five minutes, which is better than the same period in 2016. Our goal is 5.8 minutes average response time. That's our target. The average response time was 6.12 minutes, which is better than the same period in 2016. We are currently working with the IACP, who will be studying the area to conduct a BEAT realignment study and also a scheduling study as well. Response times have improved in the past year, and we use supplemental patrols and DPD investigators to help make sure that our staffing levels are where they need to be. I think I've actually seen on the watch reports a couple of times where it was actually 100% staffing, something I hadn't seen in a while, so we're glad to see that. And these officers are all, they picked out a week that they wanted to work through the year, and all of our investigators actually went out on patrol for that week, and that program is still continuing. It's had a positive impact on staffing, and I think it has also had a positive impact on the morale of the other officers out on the street. An analysis has showed that two of our districts, District Three and District Four, are the drivers of the longer response time numbers. So those two districts are driving the total response time goals that, and I think that BEAT realignment study may help us to make some adjustments and kind of balance some things out. The remaining districts have been well within our target numbers. Staffing levels. At the close of the quarter, sworn staffing was at 93%. Our BLAT number 45 class and our ALEC number 6 class graduated in July 16. DPD recruits graduated from the BLAT class, and six recruits graduated from the ALEC class, which is the first ALEC class that the department has held since 2011. The BLAT number 46 started on August 7, and we currently have 27 recruits remaining in that class. Our next BLAT class is scheduled to start in February. Our goal is to hire 15 recruits in the next couple of weeks as early hires. In this next coming academy, this will help us from missing hiring opportunities on individuals who are qualified applicants who could potentially go to other agencies. The number of recruit applicants has increased over 2016 numbers. There were 252 applicants in all of 2016, and we've had 269 applicants so far this year, with two testing dates remaining in the fourth quarter of the year. We have recently filled several non-sworn positions, and staffing is better than it was during the second quarter of 2017, even for our civilian positions. Thirty-five take-home marked patrol vehicles were ordered as part of the 2016-17 program and have been distributed to patrol officers who live in the city. Thirty-four take-home cars in the 2017-18 budget are in the ordering process now. We expect to begin distributing those vehicles in the spring of 2018. The department's sworn officers took a mandatory eight-hour mental health first aid for public safety course. This training was held during the third quarter as part of the department's comprehensive approach to mental health awareness. The class is designed for law enforcement agencies and provides a general awareness of mental health issues. The class provided information and skills to support citizens in a mental health crisis or who, or persons developing a mental health problem. The IACP plans to recognize the Durham Police Department for our efforts in this particular area and for achieving a goal of 100% officers' train. We're in the early stages of forming our community engagement unit, that would be the Public Housing Unit, which will focus on public housing communities. We've recently identified the actual location in the McDougal Terrace area, and we are currently upfitting that particular office space so that the officers will have computers and all of the resources that they need. I recently met with various community leaders in that, in that community, just to gauge, to see what it was that they hoped to see in our presence in the community. It was a very robust and exciting conversation, along with the Durham Housing Authority Director and his staff as well. So, we're looking at sort of a reception and open house right before Christmas so that we can introduce the initial officers to the community there. Our body-worn camera program has been completed, and, well, actually, deployment has been completed, and this slide provides a little bit of information about the deployment. All sworn officers from rank of captain and below are equipped with cameras and have undergone training. A total of 470 cameras have been deployed as of this date. Last Friday, November 17, we had more than 117,000 videos from our cameras. During October, the first full month of department-wide deployment, there were 22,400 videos downloaded. The average length of videos from October was 10 minutes and 21 seconds. Right now, we're also partnering with a couple of students at NCCU to help to actually do a community survey. Dr. Brown is working, Dr. Robert Brown is also working with me on conducting this community survey about body-worn cameras. We're also planning to conduct an internal survey of our officers as it relates to the cameras as well. Our supervisors regularly audit our officers according to the policy, the same as they do with our dash cam video as well. There have been currently six incidents that are currently in internal affairs as it relates to the use of the body camera. Approximately 25% of our body-worn cameras have had various issues, technical issues. However, the company has been very responsive in making sure that we have replacements and making sure that there are replacement cameras in stock as well. The new generation camera will be implemented at no cost to the city as they upgrade that technology, and we're looking forward to that because it's going to eliminate some of the issues that we've had in this, this current model. It has a lot to do with the buffering element that we wanted on this camera, which provides 30 seconds of pre-buffering for the camera before the officer actually turns the camera on. We felt like that was really a critical component to be able to see what occurred prior to the officer turning his camera on. But that, that feature drains the battery down because it requires sort of a low charge on a regular basis. So, some of the highlights, our Go Global Initiative, I'll talk a little bit about that, National Night Out in the Citizens Police Academy. Our Go Global Initiative, during the month of September, Captains Addison Edwards, Lieutenant Mark Murray and Melissa Bishop attended a week-long Go Global North Carolina Initiative specifically designed for law enforcement. Approximately 22 individuals attended this initiative as well. And it's, it was, its intent is to design to improve relationships between law enforcement and Latino immigrant communities. So, the officers rode with Mexican officers, met families, families that were living in very distressed types of situations, and learned much about the history and the culture. Already, these officers are, have met with El Centro and Pilar and are working on a proposal so that we can have comprehensive education and forums for our immigrant communities so that we can build and establish better relationships. National Night Out events were held in more than 100 communities. On August 1, officers attended events throughout the city and met hundreds of residents. Our Citizens Police Academy, 22 people graduated from the six-week Citizens Police Academy on October 5. These participants attended classes twice a week as part of this free learning experience for them. They learned about all aspects of police work by attending classes, participating in ride-alongs, and in various types of hands-on exercises. We believe this is a valuable tool to improve our relationship with the community through education and transparency, and so that our officers can also learn about community concerns So, one of the more recent initiatives is that we're working to reestablish a faith-based initiative so that faith groups can work in partnership with the Durham Police Department in our neighborhoods and community. Several local ministers from various denominations are interested in this endeavor. We've already had some initial meetings. Our yearly Citizens Police Academy has been so successful that we plan to expand it by creating pop-up citizen police academies so that we can have environments outside of the Durham Police Department, in the communities and PAC groups, in various churches and congregations, recreation centers, and so on, to provide the same type of educational experience in more of a mobile kind of atmosphere. We're excited about, again, participating in the Durham Holiday Parade, which is coming up. We plan to sort of highlight community partnerships this year. We feature residents from the Durham Housing Authority and members of our Police Athletic League. PAL programs include basketball, soccer, baseball, and golf. We are hoping to soon add a boxing program. We're working to expand the interest in our Blue Benevolence Program, which also funds various programs in the Durham Police Department, such as our mental health outreach, our police explorers, our Victims Assistance Citizens Police Academy, and, and much more. And that concludes my report. Questions?
Well, thank you, Chief. Very informative, and I'm going to defer to any questions first from any of the council members. Mayor Protem, Councilman Shul, and Councilwoman Johnson, in that order.
I don't have a, okay. I don't have a question initially. I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you're doing. As I move throughout the community, all that I hear from law-abiding citizens are very good comments about the strides that the Police Department are making, so I really appreciate that. I do have, I think it's important to note to this, to the public, that the people in the MAC actually came to work session to ask you to enhance the presence of, of the police, of law enforcement in McDougal Terrace. So I don't want people to think that we just push law enforcement there. They came and asked because they wanted it to happen. I wanted to find out, though, did you get support for your mental health training from the county, public, mental health folk at all?
Actually, what we did was, we had several individuals in the Durham Police Department that are part of the Crisis Intervention Team that are actually certified to train. We sent them to training, so a cadre of approximately four or five trainers, four trainers, trained the entire Police Department. It was very good training, and it was actually much longer than the average hour of training that you typically get, but I think officers really benefited from it. It was no cost to the department to do that.
And let me thank you for the Police Department's response to concerns in Northern Durham. Officer Brown, Captain Brown?
Yes.
Captain?
Yes.
Captain April Brown does an outstanding Captain April Brown does an outstanding job, so I have only very positive comments about you. By the way, I saw Councilwoman Shepherd in Charlotte. She sends her regards.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Recognize Councilman Shul followed by Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Always a good report. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The, I wanted to just follow up a little bit about the mental health training that was done. So, this mental health training is different than CIT training? Is it less? Is it more? What's the?
It's actually more.
More?
My experience with it was that it gives the officers more information about how they can potentially misunderstand a person's mental or physical condition. It didn't really just go into mental disabilities, but it also talked about substance abuse as well, which impacts a person's mental state of mind. Several videos are shown on how to, to, to best deal with different types of situations and I, I, I found it was very, very helpful training and I know that the officers, we only had positive responses from it too.
Right. Would you say?
It's an eight-hour course.
Eight-hour course. And would you say again, how many officers have been trained in it?
The entire police department, however many we had. It was mandatory. We made, I made it mandatory for them all to attend, so that would be approximately, with the exception of those individuals that were on light duty, which is not, not a significant number, approximately five hundred thirty-five officers.
And the, the, I want to ask a question also about, just one thing I want to clarify because I think people listening might not understand this. When you talk about eighteen victims of an aggravated assault, those are eighteen people who were in the house, say, when the shots were fired?
Absolutely. So, when you have an incident of aggravated assault, we could be in this room and someone were to fire a weapon in this room. Everyone in the room who potentially could be struck would be considered a victim of aggravat-, and, and that counts part of our crime numbers.
Yeah.
So, when we have large incidents like that, it, it, it really pushes those numbers in the wrong direction.
Sure. I just want people to be clear who are listening and may not understand that when we say eighteen victims, that doesn't mean eighteen people were hit with a bullet.
That's right.
It means they were there.
They were there.
Yeah. The, could you talk a little bit about the, you said there are six, I believe you said six incidents in Internal Affairs related to the body cameras? Could you talk about, is that, can you talk a little bit more about what they are? What other, what kinds of things are they?
Just at a, at a high level, sort of, they're more about whether the camera's on when it needed to be on. Some of those instances were, were discovered during the investigation of some other type of complaint, or it could have even been a situation where it was an officer who responded to a call to support someone else and forgot to turn his body camera on. He wasn't the primary officer, but when you respond to the call, you're supposed to turn your body camera on as well.
Thank you. The, I wanted to turn just to the larger report for a minute. On page four, it talks about youth arrests, forty-three drug violations year-to-date. And I wondered, could you, juvenile petition and adult charges? Do you see what I'm referring to there, Chief? It's on page four.
Marsh, you can help me with that one. You have the.
What, my, my question really is, so in those forty-three drug violations for youth, what typically happens? You know, what, you know, and, and, and what would be the potential disposition of those cases, most likely dispositions?
Talk about that a little bit.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, Mr. Bonfield, Anthony Marsh, Deputy Chief. So, the potential dispositions would vary depending upon the severity of the charge or if, if there were accompanying charges to go along with that or what the person's criminal history might be.
Okay.
So, I could not give you.
I understand. Suppose Chief Marsh, first of all, Chief Marsh, good to see you.
Yes, sir. Always a pleasure.
Could you say what might typically happen if, in, in one of these cases, if someone did not have a prior criminal record or was not accompanying charged? If it was, you know, a possession, you know, let's just say a police officer encountered a young person, sixteen, seventeen years old, you know, with marijuana.
Well, if it fit, not to cut you off, sir.
No, go ahead.
If it fits the criteria for our misdemeanor diversion program, that person should be diverted.
Right.
And we generally, we, not generally, we have a very good working relationship with CGRC and if one or two slip through the cracks, they're very good about notifying us like, hey, this person looks like they should have been diverted. Can you tell us what happened? And we'll follow up with the officer and find out what went into the decision-making process in that particular case. That is not very common. You catch a juvenile with, I'll say, a felony.
Yeah.
Amount of, of whatever particular substance, that's a different discussion and that goes into the court system. And then, but then again, still, and not to speak for the court system, but there are other avenues to redirect interventions for young people who are first timers in the court system.
And, and of course, now we, we're going to have the new eighteen-year-old age of juvenile age, so that'll be.
Yes, sir.
Another change. Of the forty-three, and I, I don't, I don't, you know, what might, if, of, of forty-three typical youth arrests for drug violations, how many of those might typically be referred to the misdemeanor diversion court?
I, I honestly would not be, I wouldn't want to give you a speculative answer on that because it really looked at on a case-by-case basis for the officer and that's with the police department. And again, you know, I can't speak for what goes on with the Sheriff's Department and there's, I think there's some information here, including.
We have, we have some stuff on the misdemeanor diversion court that we have in here, but I was just trying to make some sort of connection between what we're seeing in these youthful drug arrests and the numbers I saw in the misdemeanor diversion court. It wasn't clear what the connection was, so.
And Councilmember, we can always take these forty-three cases.
Take a deep dive into it for you.
And, and take a look at it and provide that information for you.
I, I, I don't, I'm not asking for a lot of extra work. If there was something that was easily available, I would love to see it. I'm not asking for a lot of extra work, but if there is something that you do have that would be easy, I'd love to see it.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's easy to do.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Marsh. And then the, I noticed also on page five, that drug violations are down about half from two years ago, about four hundred and thirty fewer. And I think that this is, these are minor drug violations, which we are, this is part two crime.
Yeah.
That I think, I'm glad that we're not criminalizing these small acts and appreciate the work of the department and the priorities that you have on violent crime, which is what I think we ought to be concentrating on.
Absolutely.
Then I saw, and also that the driving while impaired was down from three hundred and forty-four to two hundred and twenty-three. And so, I was wondering about why this might be? Does it have to do with not conducting checkpoints? Is it, is there something else that's going on in terms of enforcement for people who are driving while impaired?
It could be a combination of things, Councilman. It could be certainly, a lot of things are impacted by staffing.
Yes, sir.
A lot of things are impacted by call volume. But I, I would really kind of drill down into, throw it back on staffing for the most point.
Okay. And then, just finally, again, at the end of the year, I'd love to see an annual summary for the misdemeanor diversion court. I think you typically give us that. I think last year we got that, didn't we?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And then the, finally, you all just recounted more instances than I could mention here. The great police work, just pages and pages of, of, that were in the report of excellence by our police officers, very courageous and thorough and humane. And I just thought that it's, it's always instructive to read those and very much appreciate it, so. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Chief. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Recognize Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for your report. I've had a couple of questions. I wondered if you have a sense or an idea of what's driving the increase in reported rapes? I feel like it's very unlikely that we're actually having an increase in rapes, but rather an increase in reporting is what's responsible for that? And do you have a sense of what's causing that spike?
Well, you know, I had that conversation with, with someone earlier this week or last week and I, I don't know that it's the climate. That we have more individuals that are feeling comfortable with the outcry of what occurred with them in a sexual offense. And we are, and, and even in relationships where these are known individuals, people are, are being more educated about what their rights are in personal relationships too. So, that might be a contributing factor as well. We have looked at them very closely because we want to make sure that we don't have any type of, you know, systemic issue.
Right. And our local rape crisis center, y'all have a relationship with them, I'm sure, to help people get resources.
Oh, absolutely. And, and we always pair, pair our, we have internal referrals too, but we always pair victims up with our crisis intervention folk to follow up to make sure that they get the assistance and feel confident about the reporting process.
Great. Thank you. And I'm not sure if we talked about this the last time you were here about data related to the body camera rollout. The, kind of our, our two goals or primary goals in rolling out the body cameras was I hope that it would reduce both complaints against officers and use of force by officers. I was wondering if y'all have a plan for how to, how to study and measure that as the cameras get rolled out and so we have more data on it?
Well, we, we are keeping track of our use of force complaints and our citizen complaints as well. And I could have brought that. We, we actually have some updated information as it relates to our use of force complaints and our citizen complaints. Both categories are down considerably and I'd be glad to provide that information to you. Our Internal Affairs Office Commander there puts out a monthly report on use of force complaints and also citizen complaints, citizen encounters.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I defer to Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Hi, Chief. How's it going?
Good, sir.
I wanted to pick up, you know, I, Councilmember Shul mentioned that there were too many stories in the report to mention, but I feel compelled to talk about two of them. An investigator in, in the Criminal Investigations Unit, I believe this was in August, encountered a family, mother, daughter and a service dog who had just come here from New York City and needed a place to stay. This investigator worked at a local motel to get a discount for the family, paid out of the investigator's own pocket to stay at a hotel for a night, connected them with a faith community here in Durham to give them some help, continued to work with the family, was able to help them find a more permanent living situation, got the daughter enrolled in school, bought school supplies for the daughter, helped them get some food. That's the kind of officer we need to lift up in this community and I just want to say I'm, I'm really, really amazed by that. Also, can someone get, figure out what is in investigator's, Guardino's lunchbox and get that passed out to the rest of the, the investigators? Because in, in about a month's time, he cleared a string of first-degree burglaries in the Five Oaks subdivision, arrested two people, on a total of thirty-eight charges for abuse of, of a disabled person, identified a suspect, identified three suspects who had been plaguing the parking lots near the American Tobacco Campus with vehicle break-ins, cleared a bank robbery of all things, recovered a stolen vehicle in that case. So, a special, special recognition to Officer Guardino. I know he's one of our, one of your employees of the month in September and I really just amazed by the work that our officers do under very difficult conditions. I wanted to talk a little bit also about, just to remind you about BEAT realignment. You mentioned it a couple of times.
Yes.
I know that you know that's a subject that's near and dear to my heart. I think the very first conversation you and I had together.
Yes.
Was about this subject and I'm really looking forward to hearing how that moves forward. I know that you know that in my opinion, this is critical to making sure we have the right resources in the right areas and that I think that'll make a huge difference in continuing to reduce our response times. So, thank you for the work that's happening on that. Also, the staffing levels look fantastic right now and I'm really, really happy. I know you guys are working really, really hard on that and I really appreciate the work on that. I'm amazed at how quickly you guys have gotten up and running and are working to upfit the, your Housing Authority presence. I was really heartened by the response, both by you personally, the police department as also the DHA to the really sincere plea from that community. And the President of the Resident Council, as you know, came to our work session and talked to us and talked to you about wanting to have more police presence and I really appreciate the very deliberate and intentional way that you're going about building that relationship. It's really, really important that it be done that way and I, and I appreciate it. I did have a question about the body worn cameras. One of the things that we had talked about, and I can't remember if it was at a, at a quarterly report or some other context, was, was getting some periodic information from the department, probably in this report, quarterly report, about any requests to view footage that you have received, any, any, I, I certainly think that we probably would have heard if a member of the media had gone to the courts to try to get a, a court order disclosure. And I, I, I just wondered if we, if I could ask you to, to add some of that information in future reports, if you think that's feasible?
I, I think it is. I mean, just to be able to provide information about requests. I don't think, I don't think we've had a significant number. But, but yes, absolutely it is.
The other thing I will mention is that I had a constituent reach out to me yesterday or this morning, I can't remember, to point me to a news item regarding the Minneapolis Police Department. Their chief, Arredondo, recently started putting data about police use of force incidents on the police department's website. Obviously, the names of officers are not part of that information request, but they do include information about what kind of forces officer, force officers have used, where in that city the incidents happened, basic demographic information on folks who were the subjects of police use of force. I know that we, that North Carolina law is going to be different from Minnesota law and there may be obstacles to, to making that type of information available, but I'd like to encourage you to consider making that information more broadly available in whatever forum or format that we, we can. As, as I've said to you many times, the use of force by Durham police officer is one of the most serious things that happens in our city. It is the, the authority by which officers use force is delegated to them by the people of this city. And to the extent that we can share that information from the people from whom their authority derives, all of our authority, I think our city will be better for it and I'm glad to hear your comments about the, the data that you've seen and look forward to seeing that as well. So, if I, if you have any thoughts on that, I'd love to hear it.
I actually know the chief very well. We went through FBI Academy together, so he's, he's been in his position probably all of three or four months and is, is obviously doing some creative things, but I'll reach out to him to see how his policy drives that and maybe look at how we can be as transparent as we can with use of force.
Thank you, Chief. The other, the last thing I just wanted to mention is just to echo what the Mayor Protem said, you know, as I, as I talk to folks in Durham, I, as I go to community events, it's amazing how often I see you at them. I'm, I go to a few things, but you're, you're at a lot more things based on what I hear. I just really appreciate your personal engagement. It's one thing to develop a leadership team, to work with you to, to get your agenda implemented within the city police department. It's another thing to have you in the community personally and being, talking to folks. It makes such a huge, huge difference and I know that all of us appreciate the amount of time that it takes for you to do that. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for approaching the job that way. It, it, it really does make a difference. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate your comments. I think it's very important for me to be out there so that the community can get to know who I am and, and hear from me, what my position is and, you know, we have a lot of very casual conversations that typically sort of dispel myths about various, you know, things going on in police. on in the Police Department, and I think it's been very helpful, and I do enjoy it. Before I sit down, I wanted to tell this body thank you for supporting the Durham Police Department over the last few months, too, at our employees' appreciation. They always appreciate seeing council members as well, and also at Deputy Chief Rick Pendergrass's retirement and his send-off. Thank you all for being there.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The only question I had, Chief, I know you give it to me, but could you give me an honest opinion about the fact that we've rolled out body cameras in terms of, I noticed a lot of controversy when we got into this. You have any thoughts about that and reservations having done it?
I have absolutely no reservations. I think that was probably one of the most wisest decisions the city could have made to outfit our officers with body cameras. Anytime you roll out devices, and it's a learning curve, it's new, you have glitches, but, and I think the officers had apprehension about what this was going to mean for them as well. By far, the officers appreciate the body cameras, and they appreciate that the body cameras help not just them pay attention to their posture, their behavior, but it also helps the citizen realize that this incident is being recorded. So, you know, hopefully, the body cameras have sort of imposed a calming mechanism, you know, by way of recording incidents. So I think it was a very, very smart move for the city and I continue to look, to see that this program is supported by better technology as it rolls out. So thank you all for voting yes on the body cameras.
All right, thank you. No further questions. Thanks again.
Thank you.
We'll move into the General Business Agenda, Public Hearings, Item 21, Resolution approving an installment finance contract and providing for certain other related matters.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm David Boyd, Finance Director. This public hearing is being held to receive comment on a proposed bond issuance to fund the new parking deck, other parking-related improvements, and to refinance certain other outstanding debt. The details are included in your materials, but happy to answer any other questions you or council might have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. You've heard the staff report on the questions by members of the council on this item. If not, if anyone in the public wants to speak on this item, this being a public hearing, let the record reflect that no one asked to speak on this item. I declare the public hearing to be closed as a matter of fact before the council. Recognize Councilman Moffett.
I just wanted to comment, I wanted to thank the department and the director for your, the work that you do, keeping the finances of the city in line and keeping us with our AAA bond rating, which is so important to the interest rates that we have to pay and the taxes that we have to take from our citizens in order to pay those interest rates. So thank you for your work, David.
Thank you for that.
I thought I had a motion in the second.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We move to Item 22, Consolidated Annexation Item for 208 Smallwood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Pat Young with Planning Department. Before I turn it over to Jacob to present tonight's Planning Department items, I wanted to very briefly update you on our efforts to improve the motions associated with planning public hearing items. At your October 16th meeting, there were concerns raised about the format clarity and consistency of the motions with these items, and so we consulted the City Attorney's Office and are recommending an approach that will use consistent language, a consistent format, and one action per motion. And what this means, and Jacob's going to pull up a slide here in just a moment, is that there will be up to five motions for each case. That would be when all items displayed here on the screen are being requested by an applicant. The number of motions will vary based on which items are being requested. There could be as few as two in cases where there's only a zoning map change and a consistency statement, as many as five is when there's an annexation and a proposed change to the comprehensive plan, future land use map. And so this will be the order in which these motions appear, and the specific language is here. I don't expect you to be able to read that per se, but there will be consistent language and a consistent order. Again, and those are numbered in your agenda material. And of course, we'll get any feedback from you all. We're going to try this tonight. If you all have any changes you want to make, or the clerks do, or the manager's office does, we'll continue to refine and improve this. All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
I do have a question, briefly. And that is that, I assume that sort of under the way that we've been doing things, if one were to say, I will move the annexation, oh, it's an ordinance, right? Move the annexation, approval of the annexation petition, that would be sufficient, right? Without all the language of, that you had, that was just showing you.
Yes, I recommend that you refer directly to the language in the agenda package.
To the recommendation that's in with the agenda memo or on the agenda itself.
So, for example, move the annexation item as published in the agenda item, or something to that effect, because that has all the specifics in it about the property location and what effective date and other things like that.
So like on this item, oh, there's the annexation ordinance, okay.
All right, we have five motions, four motions, and two motions tonight, the three items.
All right, did you finish?
Thank you all very much.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I should ask the City Attorney real quick. I'm assuming there's some legal reason we have to vote separately on all these?
We've discussed that, and the way that it's set up, it does suggest that we need to be clear of what we're actually voting on. Don and I had this discussion this morning, and I think for now, I would just go there and as we worded it for you, it should be pretty straightforward going on.
Works for me, thank you.
Just for an example, on this first one, which the first item would be an annexation petition, right? But the resolution itself is two pages long. You don't need the entire resolution, Patrick, you don't need the entire resolution read into the record, do you?
No, you don't.
Just a referral to the resolution that's in the packet.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Jacob Wiggins with the Planning Department presenting tonight's public hearing items. And I would like to state for the record that all planning items in front of you have been noticed in accordance with applicable state laws as well as the requirements of unified development ordinance. The first item in front of you is a request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation petition, and zoning map change received from Catfish Farm LLC for contiguous 24-acre parcel located at 208 Smallwood Drive. If approved, this annexation will become effective on December 30th of 2017. Excuse me, that would be December 31st. The applicant has submitted a zoning map change in conjunction with this request to change the zoning designation of the property from residential rule to planned development residential 6.458. Some key commitments on the associated development plan, the applicant has committed to a maximum of 155 residential units. Those would be townhouse-only units, which is another commitment, as well as some roadway improvements to Smallwood Drive and Page Road. The Public Works and Water Management Departments have determined that the City of Durham Water and Sewer Men's have capacity for this project, and the Budget and Management Services Department determined that the annexation will likely be revenue-positive immediately upon annexation. The Planning Commission heard this request at their August 8, 2017, meeting and recommended approval of this request by a vote of 10 to 0. I would like to make one correction for the record. Thanks to Councilman Shul for catching this. In your staff report on Attachment 15 in Table 5, in regards to the student generation numbers, the numbers are inverted on the table. However, the table, the language preceding the table does note that the request is expected to increase student generation numbers by 44. That is correct. It's just the numbers got a little flipped on the table. And I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have regarding this. And I would close by noting that these, staff does find that these requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. And as Director Young noted, this item will ultimately require four separate motions and votes. Thank you.
You've heard the staff report. Are there questions on this item by members of the council? Recognize Councilman Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jacob, the 1,190 additional trips that are in Attachment 15, Table 2, the, I've heard this already in an email exchange I had with Patrick Young, but I just wanted to, thought it was worth mentioning here because at least I didn't pick up on this in the memo. Page Road is already significantly over capacity at level of Service D, and, but it's my understanding that there will be, the developer will be adding enough, a new lane such that this will be, this will still be at level of Service D, is that right?
Correct. The applicant has proffered a commitment to build a northbound left-turn lane into the site along Page Road. So at that area, would that impact, as well as the other impacts from the transportation improvements, staff finds that that area should have a level of service at 99% of LOSD.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask a question. This is the last time I'll be going through zoning, so I don't know why I'm asking this. I'm not going to have to deal with it. But just the order of how we do this, I mean, the net of this proposal is someone wants to do the PDR. So why would it not be appropriate first to determine whether or not we want to do the PDR before talking about annex and then extending utilities and et cetera, et cetera? And maybe the answer is because it's not in the city, we can't do that, but is that the reason?
Yes, that is why it's structured as it is.
Okay. Because it's not in the city, therefore, we can't talk about the zoning.
I mean, I would defer to the council's legal counsel, but I think the council could discuss the ramifications of the case, even if it's not.
I mean, the net of it is, if we don't want to zone, there's no sense in talking about the annexation and utility extension and all those things, so.
And that was, Mr. Mayor, that was part of, you know, when we talked about bringing these as consolidated action, usually, I mean, back in the day, it happened in separate, completely separate actions, so we've got everything in front of you now. But I would agree with you, if you don't want to change the zoning, you definitely don't want to go through the things that you're doing before. But it is sort of set up chronologically to bring it into the city, to do the utility extension agreement, just like that. But if you don't want to do the PDR, you definitely don't want to go through these other items.
So we can't discuss the PDR first? Or we can't?
Well, it's all consolidated now, so I would say that you can discuss whatever you want to discuss.
It's just a matter of which order we do the motions.
Right.
Okay, I recognize Patrick Byker, who's the only one that signed to speak for this item. And is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? If not, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Bell, Mayor Pro Tem Cole McFadden, members of the City Council. My name is Patrick Byker. I'm with Morning Star Law Group. I live at 2614 Stewart Drive here in Durham. I'm here representing Catfish Farms, the longtime owner of this property for this agenda item. It's been my privilege to work with these gentlemen for over five years now, since they were involved in the effort to rezone the parcel adjacent to the west for townhouses. This adjacent parcel is shown in your staff report, and it is currently under construction. Just to give a little more history, about five years ago, the City Council unanimously approved the townhouse neighborhood that's under construction along the south side of Alexander Drive. The Catfish Farms ownership group has always envisioned that once the adjacent parcel was under development, Catfish Farms would move forward if the market continued to be strong. We are experiencing very strong demand for these townhouses, and so now is the time to move forward with the entitlements for the 24 acres owned by Catfish Farms. This makes sense because a couple of years ago, the developer of the townhouses next door entered into a cost-sharing agreement with NCDOT to pave Smallwood Drive, which had been a gravel road for decades. The townhouse development we are discussing tonight eventually will have access to both Smallwood Drive and to Roach Drive in order to disperse traffic, and this will create better access for these townhouses as well as for our neighbors, Henderson Grove, Missionary Baptist Church, and All Saints United Methodist Church. Since this proposal follows our comprehensive plan, has a unanimous recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission, and fits in well with the existing development, we respectfully ask for your approval. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have, and we thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Are there questions by the council's attorney? Recognize Councilman Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patrick, I note that this development is proposing to add 44 students above the current zoning. Many developers proffer $500 per student added to Durham Public Schools. Have you considered such a proffer?
Councilmember Shul, we researched what the adjacent townhouse development did, and they contributed $15,000 for the school students, and that's a much larger development with around 260 townhouses. This one's going to be under 155. And so our team can do $10,000 to be paid prior to the time of site plan approval. And want to also reference what the mayor brought up in terms of traffic, that this development is also taking on traffic improvements that are pretty significant for a relatively small townhouse community. So we'll be happy to wordsmith that with the planning director in the morning. Thank you.
Are there other questions of the developer, members of the council? Here and now, let the record reflect that no one in the public asked to speak on this item. I would declare the hearing to be closed as a matter of fact before the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of the annexation petition.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you, it's no discussion. Will you open the vote? Open the vote? Did you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of the utility extension agreement.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consistency statement.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of the request for a new rezoning case.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Mayor Bell, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers Moffett and Davis, thank you very much for all your understanding and patience over the years. It's been a privilege, and God bless you all with many more years with your family and your friends. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item is Item 23, Consolidated Annexation Item for Ellis Road Townhouses Phase Two.
Jacob Wiggins again with the Planning Department. So this is a request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation to future land use map amendment, and zoning map changed for seven contiguous parcels totaling approximately 16 and 1/2 acres, generally located at 2725 Ellis Road. If approved, this annexation will become effective on December 31st, 2017. The applicant has submitted a future land use map amendment to change the future land use map designation from low-density residential to low- to medium-density residential. And the zoning map change to change the current zoning to planned development residential 6.678. Some key commitments on the development plan associated with this request include a maximum of 110 residential units, make commitment to only provide townhouse units, as well as some roadway.
units, as well as some roadway improvements to Ellis Road. The public works and water management departments performed the utility impact analysis, which determined that the city water and sewer mains have capacity for this project. And the budget and management services department determined that the request should be revenue positive immediately upon annexation. Uh, the planning commission considered both of these items at their July twelfth, two thousand seventeen hearing, and recommended approval by a vote of eleven to zero. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances, and that there are five separate motions and votes required for this item. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Again, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. Would ask, again, other questions by the council of staff on the staff report. Here and now, let me call on Laura Holloman. And is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? Again, this is a public hearing item. I have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Bell. Um, good evening, uh, members of the city council, as well as, uh, city staff. Laura Holloman was spouting in Norris, um, representing the applicant tonight. Um, as, uh, staff mentioned, thank you for the, for the thorough, uh, work you have done with the, with the staff report. Y'all always do a great job. Um, the request we've brought before you tonight, this low-to-medium density development, will provide an apt transition with step-down density between the existing higher multifamily density along Ellis Road, like-minded density adjacent to the west, industrial to the west and southeast, and Bethesda Park and existing single-family to the north and east. The comp plan amendment examines four criteria when considering revisions to the plan, whether the proposed change would be consistent with, with the intent, goals, guiding principles, and program with any adopted plans, whether the proposed change would be compatible with the existing land use pattern and/or designated land uses, and whether the proposed change would create substantial adverse impacts to the adjacent area, and whether the subject site is of adequate shape and size. Staff did concur that these, that the proposed development meets that criteria. Uh, the development would develop at acceptable suburban densities and land use patterns, and would avoid patterns of leapfrog, non-continuous scatter development. Um, and the staff did go over the text commitments that we are committing to, tonight. Um, we did receive unanimous, uh, recommendation from, of approval from your, uh, planning commission, and I'd just like to, to comment on, um, one of the, the commissioners, um, Miller, he provided a comprehensive explanation of his thought process in recommending approval, and said, and I quote, "As I did when the developers brought phase one to the planning commission, I think it is appropriate to point out that the care with which the developer has crafted design commitments intended to address the policies promoting attractive residential development in chapter four of the comprehensive plan. Through their commitments, the developer offers assurances that they all seek to avoid design monotony and repetitious presentation of garage door openings," end quote. Uh, we have truly embraced your adopted policies and high expectations for managed growth in Durham, and sincerely ask for your positive vote tonight. Thank you.
Other questions?
Any questions?
Again, this is a public hearing. Does anyone else want to speak on this item? Let record reflect, no one else asked to speak. I would declare the hearing to be closed, and the matter's back before the council.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we, uh, I believe I'm first supposed to move and adopt the ordinance annexing the Ellis Road Townhouses.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'll move the utility extension agreement.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
I'll move the, um, to approve the requested change in the future land use map.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
I'll move the consistency statement.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
And I'll move the requested, uh, that we approve the requested, uh, rezoning application.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moved item twenty-four, zoning map change for D L L T R R.
Thank you. Jacob Wiggins again with the planning department. Jared Edens, um, agent for the applicant, proposes to rezone approximately four acres located at the intersection of North Roxburgh Street at Bus Drive. Um, this site comprises six parcels, currently zoned commercial neighborhood with a development plan and residential suburban twenty. Um, and Mr. Edens is proposing to change this designation to commercial, um, neighborhood with a development plan, um, permitting commercial uses between a range of sixteen-thousand to twenty-thousand square feet. Um, the development plan associated with this request does prohibit some uses. Um, the four uses specifically are drugstores, convenience stores, gas stations, and restaurants with drive-through facilities. Um, some other key commitments on the plans include, as I noted, the sixteen-thousand to twenty-thousand square feet of commercial floor area, the closure of Bus Drive, and some additional project boundary buffer and screening proffers. The planning commission considered this item at their September twelfth, two thousand seventeen hearing, and recommended approval by a vote of fourteen to zero. Um, and staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. Um, action for this item will require two votes, um, one for the consistency statement and one for the zoning map change ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Again, this is a public hearing. Uh, recognize Councilman Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jacob, attachment ten, B-PAC comments number five about the consultation with Go Triangle as regards the, to the, of the need for a potential, uh, bus stop at the... You with me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. How does that consultation work with Go Triangle? I mean, so we often see this, what happens after we approve this? What happens? How does that consultation take place? And, you know, do these things, yeah?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Bill Judge.
Yes, uh, Bill Judge, Transportation. Uh, in this case, and in many of the cases, the applicant has proffered to provide transit improvements, uh, adjacent to the site along Roxburgh Road, um, with a final determination to be made at time of site plan. Given that we don't know exactly when they'll come in with the site plan, could be next week, could be a year, two years, and sometimes our transit needs change. Um, that's why we try to make that determination at the site plan. So when they come in with a specific use, and they can determine the estimated transit needs of the site, um, we review it with Go Triangle, Go Durham, to make a determination as to whether or not, uh, a bus shelter is needed or warranted.
And is it, is it something that you think about? I'm, I'm just wondering how far in the future you all will typically think about that. In other words, does it have to be that the bus shelter is warranted at that red-hot second? Or, you know, how, how do you all think about that?
Um, it's a little of both. I mean, it's primarily based on the, the routing in place at the time, or known changes in routing, and, as well as the, um, intensity of potential transit riders from the site, or at the existing stop from existing uses.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other staff questions by the council? Uh, we have one person that has signed up to speak on this item. Jared Edens. Uh, is anyone else that wants to speak on this item? If not, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Uh, Jared Edens with Edens Land. I'm here representing my client, uh, the Durham Rescue Mission. As Jacob, uh, summarized, we're proposing a commercial zoning here on Roxburgh Road. This is for the Rescue Mission to, uh, construct another one of their bargain centers. They've got four or five over town that have become a big part of their program and what they're doing. Uh, they identified this location as a, as a good spot, so here we are. Um, we did make some proffers at planning commission to address, uh, some concerns from our neighbors, Adena River. Uh, we're adding an opaque fence along one part of the property that sort of shields the park area from the building area. Uh, we also agreed to limit our building and parking envelope on the site, uh, to reduce impervious areas. That was at the request, um, of planning commissioners at the last meeting. Uh, so we received a fourteen to zero vote at that time, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions by council on the developer?
Mr. Mayor, I would just comment that I appreciated the attention to the environmental concerns which you mentioned, Jared. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a question.
Recognize...
Do you have any meetings with neighbors in that area?
Excuse me?
Did you have any meetings with, uh, affected neighborhoods in that area?
No, ma'am, hold on a second. Let me say it for one second. I'm sorry. No, ma'am. So we, we did not have a neighborhood meeting for this site because there wasn't a comp plan amendment, but we did respond as issues arose.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no further questions, uh, I'll declare the public hearing to be closed, and the matter's back before the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consistency statement.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the rezoning request.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Let's move to the next item, which is item twenty-six.
Twenty-five. Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, huh? Confirmation of assessment role for street completion in portions of the Ravenstone subdivision.
So I have item number twenty-six. Uh, good evening, Mayor Bell, members of council. I'm Robert Joyner of the...
That was, that was my fault. It was twenty-five.
Twenty-five. I apologize. Good evening, Mayor Bell, members of council. I'm Robert Joyner of the Public Works Department. Item twenty-five, to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the confirmation of assessment role for street completion in portions of the Ravenstone subdivision, and to adopt a resolution confirming the assessment role for street completion in Ravenstone subdivision within the limits specified in the agenda. Staff has received objections to the assessments for seven properties, representing two-point-six percent of the two-hundred-and-thirty-three properties being assessed. The objecting owners feel that no part of the cost of the street completion should be passed on to the owners, and the cost should be covered by other means. Suggestions included property taxes paid over the years, HOA dues, the builder and the developer. I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Again, this is a public hearing. Are there questions by members of the council on this item? Uh, is anyone in the public that wants to speak on this item? No one had signed up to speak on this item. Let record reflect, no one in the public asked to speak on this item. I would declare the public hearing to be closed, and the matter's back before the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll move that we confirm the assessment role for street completion in portions of Ravenstone.
Do that, right?
Yes.
Second. It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move to item twenty-six. Is the confirmation of assessment role for street completion in portions of Stone Hill Estates subdivision.
Uh, Stone Hill Estates, item twenty-six. Good evening, Mayor Bell, members of council. And I'm Robert Joyner of the Public Works Department. Item twenty-six is to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the confirmation of assessment role for street completion in portions of the Stone Hill Estates subdivision, and to adopt a resolution confirming the assessment role for street completion in Stone Hill Estates subdivision within the limits specified in the agenda. Staff has received objections to the assessments for twenty-two properties, uh, totaling ten-point-eight percent of the two-hundred-and-three properties being assessed. It should be noted that fifteen of those properties are owned by the HOA. Two of the objecting owners stated the cost should be covered by the builder or developer. A third owner stated the assessment would create a hardship as she has experienced a loss of income due to medical issues and has excessive medical bills. Regardless, she felt that no cost should be passed on to the owners. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Again, this is a public hearing. Uh, the public hearing is open. Are there questions by members of the council on the staff report? Recognize Mayor Pro Tem.
On the citizen who had the hardship, what do we normally do for those cases? I, I recall having done something in the past.
In the past for, uh, other, there, there has never been a case like this before in these particular types of assessments. So in other types of assessments, uh, those items are, are always based on a specific, um, hardship case or, or other things, and council has allowed relief until tap-on and, and other types of, uh, reliefs, uh, that wouldn't apply in this particular case.
But in, in this case, uh, if the assessment is confirmed, if the property owner had a financial hardship and didn't, didn't have the money to pay, the, the assessment and the lien would just stay on the property until it was disposed, correct?
That is correct.
Until the property is disposed.
Okay. And they also have ten years at zero percent interest to pay this overtime.
It, recognize Councilman Moffett.
Yes. So I know that we're, we've dealt with this case actually for a little over two years now. But just for people who might be watching, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but this is a situation where typically the homeowners, property owners would pay a hundred percent of the cost, and we're down to a much smaller percentage of that. And in fact, we took it down to, remind me, I think it's five, five hundred dollars a lot?
It's eight hundred dollars a lot.
Eight hundred dollars a lot.
Fifteen percent of the estimated cost.
Fifteen percent. So the city's already picking up eighty-five percent of costs, and I just wanted to reiterate that, not because anybody here doesn't know that, but because people listening may not understand exactly what, uh, this, this issue is. So there's, uh, several million dollars, or millions of dollars worth of work that didn't get completed by the developer years ago, and we're now at the very last point of cleaning this up and getting it. The work is done, right? Work is done.
For all the streets.
Right.
Stormwater work still has to be completed.
Right. And, but the stormwater work, we agreed, would be done without assessing the homeowners at all. Isn't that right?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to remind it, Don. Uh, is anyone else on the council has come in? If not, we do have at least one person that's signed up to speak, Gwen Silver.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, and, um, administrators.
Gwen, do you have something you're showing?
Yes, sir.
Get some assistance.
This is to bring you up to date on the condition of the streets. It's going to go, it's three minutes, so you have to pay attention to what's going on, some of the problems. This is what our streets look like throughout the entire development.
We're not seeing here that.
I'm sorry?
We're, there it is. Okay.
This is after the paving. were made worse. There was one half-street that wasn't paved that is in our development, and you'll see that on the map. The entire Gatewood community was paved, and of those properties, I believe 14 of those properties were not our properties at the beginning of this process. They were added, and the deeds were processed on September 7, 2016. So our request is that you correct the paving problem, that the city pay for those developments that were, for the properties that were transferred to us unbeknown to the HOA last year, and that the city pay for those. It's all at the end. I'll leave the presentation. If there are questions, there are members of the community that are here tonight who stand, and all of us object to being fined the $10,400.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess at some point in time, Mr. Manager, someone from the staff should comment on these.
We're prepared to do that whenever you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have one other person that has signed up to speak, and I'd like to recognize that Marilyn Brady, is that correct? If you can come to the podium to the right, please. And is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item that hasn't signed up to speak?
Mayor Bell and members of the council, I apologize for my inexperience.
You don't have to apologize.
Okay. This is my first time here, so I'm a little-
No problem.
-out of my league here. I moved to Stone Hill Estates in 2013. I have carefully reviewed my agency disclosure, my property disclosure, I should say. There was no indication that I was moving to a development that had undeveloped streets. And on that disclosure, it does not reflect that I was not on city streets. It does not say that it wasn't a private street. And it's been brought to my attention that we received no city services, for example, plowing, or street cleaning, or whatever. As a nurse care manager through those years, working 40 to 60 hours a week, I was oblivious to what was going on. The one thing I was aware of was the huge holes in front of my driveway, which is a side issue, I understand that, but not having received information when I purchased the home that I was eventually going to have to pay for streets is very distressing to me. I believe that as council members, and you probably may have not been sitting on the council at the time, I believe Durham council members should have been on the ball informing potential homeowners that they were walking into this mess. That didn't happen. So how can I be responsible for something that happened before I even knew I was going to purchase this property? I couldn't have had that foresight. And when I was buying the property, no one told me. So that's a huge objection for me to have to pay for this. It's my very vague understanding that the Council of Durham, City Council, was supposed to have secured from the developer within a contract that they would finish these streets, and that there was funds or whatever. I'm not sure on the terminology. That's why I started with an apology. And maybe Gwen can address that better than I. But none of that happened. So the former council somewhere along the way fell down on their job, and we're paying for it, or at least partially. And that doesn't seem fair to me. So I thank you for your time.
Do you want to speak? Well, if you can just come up, come up to the podium and just state your name and address, please.
My name is David Thomas, and I live at 409 Quartz Drive in the Stone Hill community.
What is the address?
409 Quartz Drive in the Stone Hill community. And I'm a 20-year resident. I've been in the neighborhood since it was brand new. It was built in three phases. Pulte Homes built the first phase. I think Beazer built the second phase, and then KB came in. And it was my understanding that a bond was not secured by the city for $1 million, and KB went bankrupt and then left numerous streets in the development undone. And we're having to pay for it, and Pulte did our section correctly, and I also don't think that is fair. And that's really all I have to say about it.
All right.
I'm Vanessa Brown. I live at 115 Citrine Court in Stone Hill Estates. I echo my neighbor's sentiments, and it was shared by another resident who was unable to remain that some of the materials used were experimental when they were paving the streets.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? If not, I'm going to ask the manager if he have staff respond to this line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure you all know the kind of two different issues. One, the issue associated with the assessment, but then the second is maybe the construction standards. So if Ms. Johnson could address the construction standards and inspections issue, then we can answer any other questions you might have about that first, and then move on to the assessment piece.
Good evening, Tasha Johnson, Assistant Director of Public Works. So what you saw were images of micro-surfacing, and there were some, a few issues with the workmanship of that work, and we are working with the contractor to go in and revisit that to see if we can rectify some of those, the areas that did receive micro-surfacing were not assessed to the residents. And micro-surfing is not an experimental technique. It is something that we are doing new to Durham as part of the pavement preservation techniques that we will be applying going forward. And what it does is seals the road to some of the cracks and preserves its condition to bring it up to a standard that is similar to some of the streets that we did pave. And when you see micro-surfacing directly adjacent to newly paved streets, you do see a stark contrast, but after it wears for a little while and cures out, you don't notice it as much. But we will be looking at some of the locations that did have some workmanship concerns.
What about the durability of the streets?
Micro-surfing does, micro-surfacing doesn't add structure to the street.
It does, it does not.
It does not, but it does seal some of the cracks and prevents, retires deterioration over time. So it does improve the longevity of the pavement.
Just to clarify, excuse me, Mr. Sir, you said the areas that were micro-surfaced, they were or were not a part of the assessment?
They will not be assessed.
Okay. Other questions by members of council, staff on this item? Yes. Recognize counsel. And then the mayor pro tem. Thank you. So I didn't really understand, I don't know who can address this, but I understood them to say that homeowners association had lots transferred to them without their knowledge. Do we know anything about this?
Robert Joyner.
This is Joyner's coming.
Robert Joyner, Public Works. So I don't know a tremendous amount of details about the transfer of the property. If you can just give me a minute to ask a question of-
Robert, just say what you know.
Yeah. So it's my understanding that some of the things were quick claimed, deeded to the HOA. They were given away by the previous landowner or landowners or LLCs who owned that property. And they were quick claim deed to the HOA. And those properties are open space, but they are adjacent to the roads that were finished and are part of the assessment.
I don't know if the city attorney has any comments about quick claim process and how that works, or do we know any history about that?
I'm not familiar with what happened here. If that was part of the overarching plan to transfer those open spaces back to the HOA, I'm just not aware.
The city wouldn't have been a part of that transaction whatsoever.
No.
No, that would have been part of by the developer, former developer.
So the way it was stated, it sounded like the HOA didn't want the property, so if they didn't want the property, they could divest themselves of it, and, no?
I think-
They not get, hand a piece of property over to somebody else without their knowledge, and they can't?
I mean, I would assume that there's some sort of acceptance of that. I'm just, again, I don't know that the city was a part of that transaction, so I don't know how that went down.
Okay. All right. You can come up to the microphone, please.
I was a member of the HOA board at that time, and we received no information regarding the transfer of these parcels.
What though, does the city have to do with that? I'm not clear about that.
Well, how can we take responsibility for something that we didn't know about? We received no notice. No one told us anything about being gifted properties.
Well, I don't know the details either, but when you do a quick claim, does anyone have to sign anything other than the person who's giving the property away? Does someone have to accept it?
I think you'd have to accept it. I mean, you can't just quick claim for the sake of quick claiming it.
Nobody said anything to anyone on the board. We, if Gwen wasn't as thorough as she is, I would not have found out about this. No one would have found out.
Well, that-
And this happened in 2016, from my understanding, and she only found out recently.
I'm not going to try to argue that on at all, because I know absolutely nothing other than what you told me, but I don't see how that's an issue for the city. It seems to me that's an issue between the homeowners association and whoever owned the land. And I can't, I don't know who was on the homeowners association, who would have been the person responsible for signing it, but you might want to go back and check and see when it was done, who signed for it. But I don't see where the city has any responsibility at all for that.
Well, I would hope that our representatives would assist us in finding out this information. Certainly, Robert Joyner has been very, very helpful in pushing through whatever we needed in order to get the streets paved, and we received no information-
Let me suggest this, if you don't mind.
Certainly.
And I don't want the city taking on any more responsibility than it has, but it seems to me that if it was recorded, it should be in the registered deeds office. Somebody will be able to show recordation and show who signed what. And Mr. Attorney, could you just look at that?
Sure.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Sure. Are there other comments or questions on this item?
The question I-
Recognize. What's that?
Don already dealt with it.
You have any more on that, Don?
I'm done.
Okay.
Mayor Bell, if the assessment includes the paving of those streets, it is of everybody's concern. And I believe it was stated that the paving of those streets was included.
Okay, it's a long history on this, and I guess I've been involved since we started listening to this, and I know as Don has indicated, we made quite a bit of compromise on the city's part in terms of trying to reduce the amount of dollars that the property owners would have to pay. And I know it's not going to be satisfactory to everyone, but I think we've done legal within what I think is reasonable, given what the situation was. But I recognize the young lady who had the hand up, if you want to come up and speak.
Hello, my name is Stacy Reeves, and I live in Stone Hill. I've been a resident for 19 years. My first home-
Your address.
511 Quartz Drive. And I actually spoke to the workers, and they are the ones that told me that was experimental process that they weren't using, and it wasn't what that we use in other communities. And for a couple of days, my neighbors and I rode around in every single street in our neighborhood, and all of them looked like those pictures she showed you. Now, if we do need to pay for it, I understand. I have no problem for paying for quality work, and I don't think the city would want to be known to be making people pay for unquality work. So if you make it right, then I see no problem, you know, on my end. But, I mean, my streets looked better last year than they do now, and for the last 19 years. So, thank you.
Well, you're welcome. I think we've heard your comments and your concerns. The pictures show it. You've heard the staff's response in terms of what they're going to do, and I don't want to get into whether it's experimental or not, but-
And none of that work is being charged back to the city.
That's the other point. You aren't being charged for it.
Okay. We'll see.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and matters back before the council on this item.
Mayor, I'll move that we had confirmed the assessment role for street completion in Stone Hill.
Is there a second to that?
I have a second.
It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? I'm sorry.
Just for discussion, I think this is a tough decision. However, we have gone around, and we've reduced the amount of obligation on the residents over the course of time, and we've made arrangements for people to be able to deal with extenuating circumstances. So I think we, it may not be satisfactory. I know that the most satisfactory thing would be for the city to pay for all of it, but I think we've come a long way over the course of the last few years. So that's why I offered a second.
Madam Clerk, will you open the vote?
Mayor Bell had already opened the vote.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. You did, close it.
It passes 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. And city attorney, if someone will give the city attorney a contact, he'll let you know what he finds out about the quick claim deed. One item was pulled, item 29, which was the city logo, and this is Craig Carter. It's Craig Carter, still present. Come forth, please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, city council. Thank you for your time. I wanted to come today. I am the social media specialist for the Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau, but today I'm here as a private citizen. I have a proposed alternative to the city logo. Also have another physical copy if you'd like to see it up close. So this design, which we are trying to project on the screens, I wanted to create a concept that, by using the negative space, it creates a clean, modern look to represent a modern city. And I was thinking about this, I think Durham isn't a logo so much as it's a place, and when designing it, I found that the flag itself was one of the most iconic symbols of- of the city. And the flag is such a beautiful and iconic symbol. I wanted to create a logo that was contained entirely within the flag. This, this typeface is called Railway. It's a very elegant sans serif typeface. It's very strong and clean and legible. And it's from Google fonts, making it very friendly for use in print and digital. And it's also open source and free to use. And that's, that's all. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I like.
Thank you.
Just to say the city, you don't know that that's the city of Durham. This was about the city of Durham.
I thought this was about the flag, Durham, North Carolina. And I thought what you've done is you inserted the city in there versus being any flag. I thought that's what's different. You inserted the word Durham. But I guess maybe, maybe I understand that the logos that we see, is City of Durham a part of the flag?
City of Durham is not part of the flag. It is part of our logo, however.
Which prominently features our city flag in addition to the word city. And I think the concern in the city...
DCBB, I'm sorry, DCBB wanted to use that for representing the Durham community. That's perfectly fine. This was a recommendation about the City of Durham government's logo, not the community's logo or flag.
This lapel pin I got on now. What's going to happen to that? Is it still usable? I'm serious. What, what, let me, I'll take it off and look at it again. It's got Durham, it has Durham on the, on the, people look at it, oh, you're from Durham. They look at the flag. So is Durham going off the flag or what?
Is Durham coming off of the flag?
Yeah, it's the name Durham coming off of here.
No, it's not. It's still going to be a part of the logo, City of Durham.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the, the issue here is the, the, the flag of the City of Durham is not the same thing as our logo.
Right.
The, the flag forms the largest element in our logo. But currently, the logo also contains the word Durham across the top vertically and on the bottom, the year 1869, and then below that, the word City of Madison. The proposal before us today would remove the elements above and below the flag and insert in their place a, a different font of text that simply says City of Durham. And I, I understand this confusion because I shared it when I was interviewed by the, the folks who helped us put the design refresh for our logo together. It was not 100% clear to me what was meant by the logo versus the city flag. And I was very helpfully instructed by the, the folks who were helping us with this effort. I believe that the work that this gentleman has done, again, on his own time, and I really appreciate that, is an alternative logo presentation that, again, does not seek to replace the city flag, but merely is an alternative proposal for our refreshed city logo. And if I heard the city manager correctly, I believe one of the concerns that he expressed is that the proposed alternative being put forward by this Durham resident does not include the word city.
Exactly.
And of course, there is a county of Durham as well that does not use our city flag in its, in its logo or any other materials. And I believe the concern is that simply using the word Durham could tend to insert confusion into, into what we're trying to do. And I believe that the logos that are, were previously on the screen in front of us dispel that potential confusion as well as eliminating some of the, I, I will call them antiquated elements in our logo, specifically 1869, the, the year of our founding. Although in two years, that will become much more interesting. But we'll burn that bridge when we get to it. And the City of Madison portion, element of the logo, I express my personal feeling that it was not important that that be in the logo. And I think some other folks indicated, as I read the presentation, that it was in some way limiting how people thought of the city and that's why that was removed. I'm a, I don't think that the logo refresh that is being proposed by staff is a revolutionary design change in our logo. But it does represent a step away from some of the more antiquated elements and a step into a more diverse and usable logo because it now has a vertical use case and a horizontal use case. And as the presentation goes on to show us, the different city departments can use that horizontal logo in a number of different ways that I think are graphically appealing, set, set out the city's identity in a, in a pretty identifiable way. And so I'm, I'm actually a big fan of the, the new logo design. I do appreciate the work that you did on the, on the alternative. I saw it on social media over the weekend. I thought it was an interesting idea to use the negative space. I thought the font was perfectly acceptable. But my preference would be to move forward on the staff's recommendation. And I hope that, all that has been helpful to anyone who wanted to hear it.
That was, that was helpful. And I guess I got so lost in focusing on the flag and what was attached to it than talking about the logo. I, I guess I didn't really look at these things as being logo. You had a flag and that hasn't changed, except you got it vertically and horizontally. That's, that's the only difference I see. What you put on top of it, what you put on the side of it, that's, that's the difference. Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm with you now. I was more focused on, I guess, my pen, what he saw, City of Durham, the name and all that stuff. But we're really just talking about...
Come around and take your...
Mayor, nobody's taking my lapel pin away. I'm keeping it.
I'm comfortable.
It's all me.
What, what I liked about what you had, you had Durham in, in the, I would say City of Durham, but rather than just Durham, but I'm, I'm with you. Where'd you have this conversation, Charlie?
I was the, the staff, the consultant who worked on the, on the logo design. Reached out to me for quite a lengthy interview, which I shared many thoughts about the design elements and...
Thank you.
All of the brilliance.
Yeah. Hold on for just a minute. Mayor Protem has invited us on to council, Council Morphet, and then I'll get to...
Did you reach out to our youth for their opinion?
I'm sorry, for, reach out to?
Youth, why, or UTH, young people?
We reached out to various audiences, including the Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau, of course. We got their feedback and the Chamber of Commerce, Blackpool Management, however, and a lot of internal staff. However, we did not include the youth in this.
I was actually, I should have said youth commission because they need to be more involved in, in decision-making.
We'll definitely do that the next time.
All right, Council Morphet.
Just an observation, this page is actually very informative because it's got the old logo on it as well. Sometimes we overlook it because it's, it's usually there. But then this is also instructive because this is sort of one way that the logo would be used. So you can look at the logo that's on the, on the page and look down to the corner and think about, you know, how this would be on the, on the scene. I'm a, I, I believe it's quite a bit of work. I appreciate the work that you've done. I also believe that quite a bit of work went into the logos that are in front of us. And if we're dissatisfied with them, then we should send them back to staff for further work. But I can't see adopting something different tonight if, just on spur of the moment.
We got quite a lot of positive feedback on the logo, on, on the flag itself. In fact, the flag was the most positive element of it. And part of what we, our challenge was, was a way to use the font along with the colors and the logo itself. And we think we achieved that with the, the current logo that we're proposing.
Recognize the mayor Protem.
My concern has to do with our lack of involvement of our youth commission. And they are supposed to be an advisory committee for decisions. And I hope they can become a part of what we're doing, especially with things of this nature. And I know it's too late for that now, but we need to, I've heard so much talk about young people. So I think we need to make sure that the young people are involved in decision-making.
Yes, ma'am.
Recognize Council Schuler.
Beverly, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Suppose someone wanted to use the logo or suppose someone wanted to use the flag in such a manner as Craig has used it with the Durham in the inside it. What, what is our stance on that?
We don't have a policy per se against that. In fact, a few years ago, we did talk about copyrighting the flag. And we never did because of some challenges, some cost issues. We certainly can do that. However, there are a lot of companies now that are using the flag and representing their own companies or selling a product using the flag. And we have not asked them not to unless we've seen it used in some egregious manner.
So this, this could be available for use, for example, if the Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau, Bureau wanted to use it in this way or some other. Is that right?
It could be, yes.
You don't encourage it?
We don't encourage it.
So...
Excuse me, but at the same time, the Durham Visitors, Convention and Visitors Bureau represents much broader area than the city of Durham.
Right.
And so we wouldn't want to restrict their use to only the city of Durham if they had a broader, a broader market. You know, could say Durham NC, you could, you know, people could use a lot of different, but they're not representing the city government of the city of Durham. And that's the intent of this logo.
Okay, thank you.
Well, see, my, my dumbness, what I miss, I was more focused on the flag than anything else. I mean, I never, I, I'll be honest, I really never thought about this being a logo. Durham, the flag, 1869, and City of Madison. I never thought about it as being a logo.
I was in exactly the same place, Mr. Mayor, that they explained it to me several times before I got, exactly. I had the same problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Should have asked, when, when we had the work session, nobody wanted to listen. Nobody wanted to hear it.
That's right.
Don't talk about it.
We were ready to go.
So just real quickly, so I have a, a personal experience with using the flag recently. And I see at least one other person in this room who does as well. And so, I mean, I just, I do think that's something we need to give some thought to. And again, maybe, you know, is how are we trying to protect this? That's a different question than what we're talking about here, but it just isn't thought.
Okay. And... We do pursue that.
But I do, I think that what we've got is good. I like it a lot. I think this is really interesting, Greg. But I think the staff's done a lot of good work. It just, you know, it, it strikes me as this is the kind of thing when we're really trying to do, you know, at some point, we're going to be doing something, you know, we're going to want a new logo at some point and we can have an open process. And it would probably be a lot less expensive than the $200,000 that Raleigh just spent for their tree. I was pleased that our logo is a heck of a lot better than theirs. And so, so I think it's a good idea, but I like, I like what we've done. I think we've had a good process and ready to go.
Okay, I guess we need to vote on this, right?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the updated Steve Durham logo as outlined in our agenda.
Second?
Properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Beverly.
It passes seven to zero.
Anything else to come before the council before we adjourn at 9:21 PM? We have a work session tomorrow at 1:00. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.